Our Vice Mayor will do our prayer tonight and we are honored to have Samuel Phillips from Troop 398 at St. Mark's United Methodist Church, and as soon as we have our prayer, we'll let you lead us in the pledge, if that's all right. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, citizens, staff, and all who's looking. Will you join me for a moment of silence, please? Amen.
Amen.
Phillips? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're honored to have you with us tonight, and we appreciate you leading the pledge for us. Thank you. I assume you are working on a communications merit badge, is that correct?
Yes, sir, I am.
Good. Well, we wish you luck, and you're welcome to stay for as much of the meeting as you can stand.[104.43][104.43](Laughter). Uncle Dave Makendaze is coming, and I wanted to add to that silent prayer, thank you for some rain. Water is life, as our new water and sewer director says, so it's nice to have a little come down from the sky, even though I'm sure it interferes with some activities. But I did not see any animals lining up two by two, so I think we'll be able to get through this, a little bit of water, so I'm thrilled that we've had it, and certainly makes things easier for all of us. Council members, you have before you your consent agenda. If you've had an opportunity to look through that, are there any questions regarding any of the items on the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to accept?
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. You have the minutes of our regular meeting, June the 7th, June 14th, and June 21st of 2012, and a special meeting July the 2nd, 2012, before you. Are there any additions, deletions, or any corrections to those minutes as they have been presented?
Move for approval.
Thank you. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Before we get into our second readings and first readings, our Service Excellence program that we have with the city is ongoing, and I wanted to ask Shannon Logan if she would come for just a few minutes and give us an update on where we are, knowing that always we try to be better, not only as council members, but as city employees, and all of us do, and it may take a little while, and it may take with some, and others it may take a little longer, so kind of give us an update on our Service Excellence program, if you will.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and council members. And yes, in 2010, you all set forth as one of your primary goals for the city of Murfreesboro to create a service excellence program or a customer service program dedicated to trying to improve services, both for our employees and throughout our community. And through our city administration staff and through the Human Resources Department, such program was created and developed in conjunction with Mr. Brian Luderah. In 2011, you all trained seven in-house trainers to present this information, Mr. Laney Goodwin, our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Glenn Godwin, our Human Resources Director, Ms. Pam Russell, our Assistant Human Resources Director, Mr. Jim Crumley, our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Becky Johnson, who is our Marketing and Events Program Coordinator for Parks and Recreation, Mr. Matthew Blomley, who is our Principal Planner, and Mr. Alan Swader, one of our Assistant Fire Chiefs, to go out and present this information and to be trainers for delivering this type of information to all of our employees. In 2011, I was moved into this position from Principal Planner to Service Excellence Coordinator to oversee the program, and I too became an instructor. Over the last six months, we have conducted over 60 training classes with our employees, and over 900 employees have received the training through small group sessions, classes ranging in size anywhere from four people at some of our fire stations to as large as about 25 people, to really help in experience the adult learning environment. We have a two-hour module and a four-hour module based on different job descriptions and whether phone and email skills are necessary. And we've also got a class that's specific to our police department that's being offered through their Peace Officer Training, and I conduct that training once every or twice a month with them, and still have four classes to complete with them. But the majority of the employees, including all of our full-time employees except with the exception of the few in police, have been through the training. And I want to just say to you that it has been just a wonderful, wonderful experience for me. I've had the benefit to meet these employees and to really see what a truly talented staff we have, dedicated employees who really strive every day to give their heart and soul to the city of Murfreesboro. It has been a true blessing for me. We have such a good story out there that I'm not sure always really gets told or shown, but I want you to know that I feel like this being my third city that I've worked with in my government career, that this is truly the best staff that I've ever encountered. I feel very fortunate and blessed. Through this position, I've been able to work with every employee sitting in this room more than I ever did before, and also with a lot of the other employees throughout our city departments. I think as you'll find in the coming year, you're going to find more and more of our city departments trying to really embody the service excellence ideal. There's exciting things happening in our departments, and I don't want to steal their thunder, that you're going to be hearing about that deals directly with service excellence and how they're taking the service excellence mission and motto and really making it something very important to their department, and they each have different ideas of how they want to move it forward. But I do want to brag on one of our departments tonight and show you something that you're going to start seeing around our city facilities in the city of Murfreesboro. This sign was created by Mr. Tom Sage, who is our Facilities Director for Patterson Park, and you'll see this at all of our Parks and Recreation facilities, you're also going to see it in City Hall. The sign that really shows to our citizens and our employees what it really means with our mission statement and our four core service values. And this was his idea, this was his brainchild. He wanted to do something that he could display in his facility to show his citizens how important this means to him and to his staff, and I'm really, really proud of that. And those are the kinds of things that are happening from our employees, our employees that have the great ideas that can take something like something that they've learned in service excellence and push it forward. And so this is just one thing, the one in City Hall will be going up very soon, and like I said, you're going to start to see these throughout all of our city facilities, and this is just an idea that one person had and ran with it. And that's the kind of things that are coming out of service excellence that I'm really proud of, and I hope that you all are proud of as well. I want to thank you for your support, I want to thank you for your participation, and several of you attended the classes, and I really appreciate that. And we look forward to developing the content for Service Excellence Part Two and moving forward with the program, with new classes beginning at the beginning of 2013. Everything that the employees said on their evaluation forms has been read and reviewed by me, and we want to make sure that the content is specific to the things that they have requested. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from the council?
Oh, I would just like to say I did attend some of your sessions, and you're doing a fabulous job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, we thank you, and certainly that puts a strong incentive to our employees, and our residents and business owners will certainly expect better service, and even though in some instances we cannot make everyone happy, we certainly will try to go out of our way to at least show them that we care about what their concerns and issues are and what possibly that we can do to make it better in the future.
That's right, Mayor. Sometimes with what we do with and regulations, we have competing interests, but it's sometimes it's not always about the outcome, it's about the service and the quality and how you provide that service, and that's really something that I think our employees embody every day. And I would like to just go ahead and say one couple other things, is that, you know, service excellence takes many forms, and today's front page of The Tennessean is about government technology, and you're going to hear from our new IT Director tonight on a service that he wants to provide, that will help provide service excellence. So it's just, it embodies so many different things. In addition, you're getting ready to see something come through from us that would be a rewards program for employees that we're really excited about, to show them that they are important and what they mean. And finally, we have a date selected for our employee picnic that we haven't been able to have for the last several years, and we hope that each one of you all will be there and that you will help to serve our employees. So I hope that you all will make sure to try to make that a special date for you, and I hope it'll be a special date for our employees as we move forward, with trying to find other ways to show them how important they are.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Thank you, Ms. Logan. Thanks very much. All right, we'll go on with our agenda then under our second readings and consider for passage on second reading, an ordinance to annex approximately 47 acres along South Rutherford Boulevard to incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and to adopt for the same a plan of services. It's on second reading.
Move for passage on second reading.
Second. Thank you. A motion and second, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider for passage again on second reading, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance and the zoning map of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, as heretofore amended and is now in force and effect to zone approximately 47 acres along South Rutherford Boulevard as heavy industrial HI district simultaneous with annexation.
Move for passage on second reading.
I'll second you again, Ryan.
All right, we have a motion and again a second. Thank you. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage on first reading, an ordinance amending the Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter 4, Alcohol, Section 419, regarding possession of beer, wine, and other alcoholic beverages on public streets and places. Ms. McGannon?
Mayor Bragg, members of the council, before you tonight is a recommendation to change the city code to more clearly establish what is prohibited in the form of open containers. There'd been some confusion about the existing provisions as to their applicability to both types of beverage and location, as well as to make clear that those provisions can be waived by a permit or license from the city. The reason for bringing it to you tonight is to eliminate that confusion, but also to lay a pathway for some special events that we believe are going to be of interest to the community with support of downtown that are not dissimilar to the kinds of special events some of you may have attended in some of our neighboring communities where an area of the downtown is roped off and special events involving alcoholic beverages, adult beverages, are used for charitable fundraising purposes, Wine Fest or Beer Fest. The expectation is that I'll be coming back to you with a revision of our special event ordinance, which is needed for a variety of purposes, but in order to make it clear that this is permissible, to clearly prohibit it, day-to-day events, but to leave this pathway for special events. And so that is the purpose of the ordinance amendment that I bring to you tonight.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McGannon. Any questions of Ms. McGannon regarding this ordinance? It provides a pathway.
Yes, a prohibition and a pathway.
Prohibition and a pathway. All right. Council members, you have this on first reading. What are your wishes?
Second.
All right, you have a motion and second on first reading. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Human Resources Director with regards to Swiss Ray Stop Loss Renewal Contract for the budget year 2012-2013. Mr. Godwin, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and good evening, members of the city council. Included in your packet this evening is a recommendation that I have prepared, as well as a proposal from the city's benefits consultant, Lisa Stam, who represents Sheriff Morgan, requesting your approval of the city's annual stop-loss reinsurance contract. Stop-loss insurance refers to the insurance purchased by the city that offsets financial exposure for health insurance claims of a large dollar amount, typically those that exceed $125,000 per claim. As Ms. Stam's letter indicates, Swiss Ray, the current stop-loss carrier for the city, returned the most competitive bid. I will also note that Ms. Stam outlined the relevant aspects of Swiss Ray's bid in her letter, including the basis for contract, which is on a 24/12 basis, specific deductible per member, policy period maximum, which is due, of course, to healthcare reform. No recommendation from Ms. Stam on the aggregating specific options that were presented by other bidders. However, there is a caveat with respect to Swiss Ray's bid, including a no-new laser and a rate cap option, which the city prefers to have received. We think that's very valuable. Swiss Ray's bid, therefore, is the most competitive and represents an 8% increase over the current premium, and this amount would result in $730,047. I ask that you provide approval of the bid and the recommended alternatives for renewal of this stop-loss reinsurance contract, including the authorization and execution of the contract by the mayor when received from Swiss Ray. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm able to answer questions that you might have this evening.
If there are no questions, what are your wishes? Second. All right. A motion and second to approve. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Godwin.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the city engineer as to the final change order number two for construction of Fortress Boulevard Manson Pike Gresham Lane Reconfiguration, and four, the construction agreement with CSX Transportation Incorporated for the Joby Jackson Parkway from I-24 to US-231 or South Church Street. Mr. Griffith, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, and members of the city council. First item I have for you tonight is the final change order for the construction of Fortress Boulevard Manson Pike and Gresham Lane Reconfiguration. The council previously approved the construction of the reconfiguration and awarded Charles Dewey Construction of Franklin, Kentucky, the project. The planning and engineering department has accepted the project as being complete. Staff does note that some warranty work is currently being completed where we had a road settlement over a large storm drain pipe, but that is considered warranty work. Our consultant has completed the final change order, which is attached for your review. And the final change order is intended to revise the project, reflect actual work and quantity used in construction. The total contract price will decrease by $67,160.94 to a total of $6,332,613.71. Staff recommends approval of the final change order and the contract amount. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the city's engineer?
Mr. Griffith is standing there, trying not to smile because he's bringing a change order that's actually a reduction in the change order, so, Mr. Griffith, just to say it's okay to go ahead and smile.
Well, Mr. Gilli likes to point out, I'm sorry he's not here, there's always the next one that may not be.[1271.42][1271.42](Laughter).
Move for approval.
Second. All right, you have a motion for approval and a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Second item is a construction agreement with CSX Transportation for the Joby Jackson Parkway improvements from I-24 to US-231. The council has previously approved the design and right-of-way acquisition for the widening extension of Joby Jackson from I-24 to Church Street. A site map has been attached for your review. As part of this project, a new bridge will be constructed over both the Middle Fork of the Stones River and the CSX Transportation Railroad. In order to obtain approval from CSX Transportation across the rail line and right-of-way, their representative was required to be on-site to monitor the construction activities and provide any additional flagging services as necessary. The attached agreement outlines the scope of work that either CSX Transportation or their consultant will provide during the construction phase of this project and payment requirements. An advanced pavement of $185,410 is required by CSX Transportation to complete these services during the construction phase. City will only be responsible for actual reimbursable expenses incurred by CSX, and any remaining funds from the initial deposit will be refunded. Might add, the last two transportation projects we've completed with CSX, we had a substantial amount of refund, upwards of over $100,000 from them, so while the deposit is high, we expect to get a significant amount of it back. With that, staff recommends approval of the construction agreement, subject to review by the city attorney. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
If there are no questions, I move for approval.
Second. All right, you have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Remember, it takes a lot of attaboys to overcome an off-fooey.[1446.51][1446.51](Laughter).
Attaboy, Mr. Griffith.
Attaboy. Consider recommendations of the Information Technology Director, IT, to approve an agreement with Tennessee Information Consortium Incorporated to provide services for electronic payment processing. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg. Council, I'd like to recommend that the city council adopt and approve acceptance of electronic payment, such as Visa, MasterCard, American Express, and electronic checks as an additional payment option for all points of sale for the city of Murfreesboro. This service will quickly enable our citizens to pay their, pay for city services by means of electronic payment. This service will also provide an additional option of online payment, which will extend our payment acceptance to 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Tennessee Information Consortium is an electronic payment processor that has worked with Tennessee contracts for over 10 years, including the state of Tennessee. They are self-funded solution that is funded through transaction fee of 3% per transaction. We recommend that we utilize Tennessee Information Consortium as a third-party processing solution. Implementation of point-of-sale equipment and a PCI-compliant on-site solution will be installed at no cost to the city of Murfreesboro. The pre-implementation business plan attached has been submitted to the Tennessee State Comptroller and is pending approval. If this recommendation is favorable with the council, we would like to proceed with this implementation, starting with the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department and City Court for an August 1st go-live. I open to any questions.
Any questions regarding this recommendation?
Did you say there was a fee per transaction?
Per transaction, yes.
3%?
3%.
Checks, too?
Checks are a flat fee of, a flat fee of $2.75.
Gotcha.
My opinion, I think that although we're, we are having to pay a 3% fee for using credit cards, I think that the research that you read when you see this, that actually our receivables and our debt would go down because people have the ability to be able to pay. So although, you know, you look at our city court receivable that we have on fines, having this is, I think, will easily pay for itself by not having to use the collection service that we've used, and I hope that we're able to do this as we move forward in many other areas. It's a step in customer service that we've really been needing to have implemented, so...
So our customers are going to pay the fee, is that correct?
That's correct.
If there are no other comments, I move for approval.
Second.
All right. A motion and second. Any questions regarding the motion? If not, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we'll hear from the city attorney again with regards to the use of right-of-way for soliciting funds. Ms. McGannon?
Mayor Bragg, members of the council, I gave you with the agenda materials a very brief summary of some of the legal issues involved in local government regulation of persons soliciting funds using public property, particularly sidewalks and roads. As I indicated in that material, this involves a variety of legal issues, and there have been a variety of approaches taken over the years. It is an incident that involves both speech, subject to federal and state constitutional protections, and conduct which can be distinguished from those speech issues. I tried in the report to indicate to you what some of the options the city might have and some steps that the city might take based on the focus it wants. There seem to be a variety of issues. I've also tried to identify for you the existing state and city ordinances that deal with these issues. Those were attachments to my letter to you, and to identify some steps that I think might be appropriate before any additional ordinances might be considered. As I said, this is a multi-sided issue, and I think it might be more appropriate if rather than trying to read to the council what I told you at such length in the letter, I've responded to questions you might have, but of course, I serve at your request, and if you want me to go through it for benefit of the listening public, I'll be glad to try and do a summary.
Council members, do you have questions? Mr. McFarland?
I think, Ms. McGannon, thank you for the research that you've done. I think this is something that several of us have brought up over the past several months, as we've been getting complaints and different things from residents, and this helps to see... helps to see, you know, some different options. But one thing I think would be prudent, if the council would want to do this, we have so many, what I would say, experts in this field, in the community, when we talk about panhandling and different things, that when we see, we have the Journey Home, we have Greenhouse Ministries, United Way, Salvation Army, Ms. Huddleston, who's run Room at the End for many, many years and is well-respected within the community. I think it would be good, as a council, that we have those people come in, maybe at a special meeting or something, in Room 218, and let's discuss what may be a solution to our, or some solution to some of the opportunities that we have, and maybe hear their side on different things that, as a council and as a city, we may would do. So that's just a suggestion from my part.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Smotherman?
And I fully agree with Shane. I think that we probably do need to have a special meeting in 218 and discuss it, because I think this issue is so large and is becoming such a problem that it's probably not something that we can resolve tonight. But certainly, I do, I'm receiving multiple emails and phone calls regularly with concerns, and certainly, I don't want it to be projected that we're trying to pick on someone, or we're trying to isolate any group, because we're really not. It wouldn't matter if it were nuns and Girl Scouts. If they're stepping into the traffic, they're endangering not only their self, but they're endangering the flow of traffic. And that's the true concern, is the safety issue. And certainly, if there is potential that we could step up the enforcement of our current law that we have on the books, I think that would probably help as well, because I think that the lack of enforcement probably is possibly making the problem seem as if it's not that bad when you go back and look at it historically. But the reality of it is, it's happening daily, and truly, we're hearing so many complaints, and truly, if someone's in need, the kindness and graciousness and goodness of the people of Murfreesboro, there's no doubt they'll step forward. The other hand is the fraudulent panhandling that's taking place, and that's the true concern, is we have services, we have agencies that can help people in need. And certainly, the United Way would be certainly a better way to address the problem, rather than going and handing a dollar directly to someone on the street corner with a sign. There's, I've gone out personally and talked and interviewed several other people on the street corners, and just to understand the situation, because I know that their theory is, well, you need to spend a day in my shoes, and truly, I've gone out to try and understand what the situation is. There are people on our street corners in this town who are trying to collect money, and they see it as their job. And truly, I don't think panhandling is a job. It's a means to collect money, and they're doing it fraudulently. They're misleading the public, and we need to find a way to stop it. And if having a special meeting and trying to direct the people who really do have needs, I think that would be beneficial, and at the same time, the enforcement of the laws and trying to keep people from entering the intersection for the collection, whether it be take police cars and put them at the intersection with cameras, and see if we can't truly address the issue of people. Because I know we're having near misses and accidents, but no one's going to call the police and say, "We had a near miss." And I think that's the reason that we're not seeing the reporting of it. And truly, I think there's some concern about even dealing with some of the people in the situation, because I think every person I talked to, with hardly any exception, they all had felonies. And so, just because of that, I think the people who are stopping at the intersections and have concerns for their own well-being, they probably aren't reporting it, but I think it's happening. At least, they tell me that, in the emails I'm receiving, that they have that concern. And so, but certainly from the safety perspective, and that's where I would like to see us pursue this issue, is the endangering of the public at the intersection, trying to proceed through it, and certainly trying to protect those who are trying to enter the intersection.
Any other comments? I might mention, as Ms. McGannon has pointed out in her research for us, that the city can only do so much in enforcing a panhandling law if we had one. The public needs to be educated to the fact that if they do not wish to have these folks on the street, then the proper response is, don't give them money. If you're interested in serving these people, then the appropriate social service agency that's available, and you mentioned several of them, Greenhouse, Salvation Army, Journey Home, a number of those people, Room in the End, are available, and I'm certain that they could use your dollars to serve these people, certainly in a better way than just handing over $2 or $5 or $10 to somebody. So the public education part of this is, if you don't want it, do not support these people on the streets. Don't offer them money. Don't give them money. Please be as generous as you can to the agencies that serve these groups. I certainly don't mind getting together, but again, the city is limited in what we can do. The public can help us tremendously by not giving money to people on the street who are asking for money.
Mr. Lyons, what would be a good, because I do think that the people who live in Murfreesboro don't disagree with you, but, you know, I think the one thing about Murfreesboro, we're so blessed to have such, to have so many tourists that come in for soccer and baseball, and so what would be a good way that maybe we could talk with those individuals of getting something for the people who are not in our community, who come in, who, you know, may participate and help with the efforts on that? That may be something to think about, is how we do that.
Yeah, we can try to brainstorm something. I know I've seen in downtown Nashville, they've taken some of the old parking meters, and individuals can put money in the parking meters, and that money is collected and given to some of the help agencies. You know, that was their way in the tourist area of Nashville, where they did see some people panhandling, to get people to give money, to direct it to the help agencies, and feel like they were doing something good. So we'll brainstorm some ideas with staff, and maybe reach out to some of those help agencies to get some ideas from them about what they might suggest.
And I think Mr. Smotherman brought a good point. The part that I'm more concerned about is when you see the same people in the same spots day after day, week after week, month after month, that's when it starts to concern that that's a pattern. So, you know, that's the part that concerns me and scares me, so, but...
All right, then if you will give us a little bit more research and possibly look at some programs that have been successful, not only in enforcement of some particular ordinance, but in public education, I think that would be important for us to consider at some future time. And again, the easiest way to discourage is not to give them money. So I could understand that, I think they can. Any other comments regarding the right-of-way for solicitation of funds?
I totally agree, and I think those are excellent comments from Shane, you, and Eddie. I think those are excellent. Bring the agencies in, and let's talk about it, because this is really a hard thing, but safety is an issue, and like you said, some of the same people. And, you know, the Bible said they're going to always be poor among us. And also, as citizens, you know, it's just hard to decipher who needs it and who doesn't. I was talking to a mayor, I've been doing some research in Scottsdale, Mississippi, and he was saying that they went to the meter thing, and then they turned around and gave it to agencies. So I think it's good if we include our agencies, because they can give us a lot of insight on a daily basis on, you know, this problem. So I totally agree, we get together, and...
Mrs. McGannon?
Well, we do have a homeless task force, and I'm sure they're aware of who these folks are, and probably have seen them and visited with them, so possibly that we could use some comment from our, members of our homeless task force, and give us some more further information, maybe some more understanding.
See, would you like us to have some more conversation through the homeless task force and report back to the mayor and council? Is that what you'd like for a next step, or is there, we want to make, staff wants to make sure we understand what you'd like us to do next?
I'm fine.
Why don't we do that? The homeless task force, could we utilize their services to try to give us some idea of what we, where we might need to go?
I think it'd be also good, Mr. Lyons, if it's not you, if you have a meeting with those agencies, invite them to come in and maybe let us know, and if it's not something that we can have a special call meeting, maybe let us know individually if we can come and sit in and listen, and...
Well, we have a homeless task force meeting Thursday?
Thursday at 2:00.
At 2:00? That'll be here?
Yeah, next week. Thursday, 2:00 in Room 218.
In Room 218, so that possibly would be a place for those interested parties to come together.
And Ms. McGannon, we currently do have an ordinance that prohibits people from entering the intersection, and I think there's even a state highway ordinance or law that prohibits people from entering the roadway. Is that not correct?
It is, sir.
So I guess, if we can push for enforcement of that actual law, then I think that, you know, because I'm not trying, in no way are we trying to pick on anybody, and that's the one thing I want to make absolutely clear. But the one thing that we do want to do is somehow let these people know that what they're doing is not okay, because certainly, many of them I've talked to look at this as their job. And I'll give one example, although I really don't like giving examples in this situation. Maybe I shouldn't, but I will. There's one guy who's working abroad in Memorial, and he lives in a house in Rockvale on six acres, and he has a job, but he understands that the amount of money that he can raise in a day's time is so large that he can't resist coming down there and playing off the sympathy of the people of Murfreesboro. And there's something inherently wrong with that. And the day I was talking to him explained to me that he had a bill from a rental company for his zero-turn radius mower that was $186 that day, and he was not going to leave that intersection until he raised $186 that day. That is not what we want, people playing on the sympathy of Murfreesboro. And that's the people that I think we need to target. I mean, it, you know, I think one of the most successful ones, the one holding the sign that says, "I'm not going to lie, I won't beer." And truthfully, I understand he's one of the more successful panhandlers in Murfreesboro. That's not a need. That may be a won't, but it's not a need. And truly, as the mayor said, I think there's nothing we can do more than reiterate to the public that you are not helping the situation by giving to people on the street corners. Because so much of what you think you're doing, that you feel that you're helping, and I do think that the blessing is in giving the gift, but at the same time, the fraudulent use of playing on people's sympathies is something that we need to address, and we need to address it very soon.
So we'll have a homeless task force meeting. We'll ask staff and any other interested parties who would like to participate to be at least heard, or we'll try to get some ideas or information to further this discussion later then. Would that be fine? All right. Anything else regarding this? If not, then we'll consider for adoption a resolution to provide other post-employment benefits for retirees for fiscal year 2012 and 2013. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, this is an annual election council makes to allow our retirees a post-employment benefit, also known as OPEB, the ability to participate in our medical insurance plans as a retiree, as a supplemental plan. And this is already budgeted at the amount of $769,027 in our fiscal year 13 budget, and this is something we have to disclose for GASP requirements. So we've drawn this up so that we have made an election to allow them to continue to participate for this budget year.
All right. Any questions from Ms. Wright regarding this yearly agreement to provide a post-employment benefit for our city retirees?
I move for approval.
A motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. This time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution expressing official intent that certain expenditures to be incurred in connection with certain public works projects and related expenditures for a HVAC chiller for the police building be reimbursed from proceeds of notes, bonds, or other indebtedness to be issued or incurred by the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
Mr. Lyons?
Mayor, members of council, this is a refunding resolution. The police department's chiller is failed. This was a project we had planned to come to you in the CIP in two weeks in your workshop. However, we are not going to make it through the summer with that chiller. We had crossed our fingers to hope to make it, however, that did not happen. Mr. Whitaker was able to find a chiller that was on the shelf that we wanted to go ahead and move forward and actually have it installed this upcoming weekend, so we can keep the police department building cool. So this was a project you would have seen in the CIP, and we're asking to move it forward since the equipment failed. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lyons?
Move for approval. Seven.
All right, you have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. This time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution regarding the possession, use, and consumption of beer, wine, and alcoholic beverages at the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center.
Ms. McGannon?
Mayor Bragg, members of council, as you know, the chamber building and visitor center is city property. As such, it is subject to our ordinances, which require you to specifically approve rules before there is any use, possession, consumption of alcohol. You have before you in the same format that you have previously approved for other city properties, like those of recreation and golf, an attachment that contains some rules. These have been approved by the chambers board and by staff, and the resolution is recommended to you.
All right, any questions for Ms. McGannon regarding this resolution?
Move for approval. Seven.
All right, you have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
All right, beer permits. Do we have any beer permits tonight, Ms. Wright?
Yes, sir, we have several tonight. We have a new location of a convenience store at 1695 Memorial Boulevard that has met all of our requirements. We have an ownership change, mostly corporate structure change, of a restaurant at 1911 Medical Center Parkway, Suite A. They have also met all of our requirements. We have a convenience store that has had an ownership change, mostly a corporate structure change, at 4106 Franklin Road. They have completed all of our requirements. We have another ownership change, again, corporate restructuring of a retail location at 2615 Medical Center Parkway, Suite 2400. They are lacking a couple of building codes inspections before they're complete. We have a entertainment center at 2962 South Rutherford Boulevard, Suites J and K. They also lack a couple of building codes inspections before they're complete. There has been beer there before. This is a new owner and a new name. We have two more convenience stores, one at 3208 South Church Street, one at 2464 New Salem Highway. I believe they both just lack their sign inspections before they are complete. And then we have a special event permit for the chamber that has already been approved once, and I got a call from Stephanie Brackman that she realized that we were given the wrong date. It's August 14th instead of August 8th, so I would like to reissue that permit. And we have a special event permit for United Way, that actually, the event's Saturday night at 2225 Southeast Broad Street, and their application was in order as well. And I recommend... And I recommend those for approval that are complete and the ability to issue permits for those that lack building codes inspections once they have done that successfully.
All right. You have this recommendation, Ms. Wright. Do I have a motion that we approve based on her recommendation, these beer applications?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
You have a list before you of the bills to be considered for payment? Are there any questions regarding these bills? And if not, is there a motion that we pay the bills?
I move that we pay the bills, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. Ms. Harris, thank you very much. We have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
At this time, I recommend to you Irene Porter to our cable commission replacing its chairman, Mr. Barry Smotherman, who has indicated that he would like to resign. And also, Mr. Ron Crabtree, who is on our tree board and our cable commission will be leaving there, and I recommend to you that he be our newest member of the Water and Sewer Board, replacing Mr. Blake Smith. I make these recommendations to you.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Any other business from staff or the council to come before the council at this time? Oh, here comes atta boy.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg and members of the city council. I do have a couple of other items to bring for you as other business. Apologize for having to do that. These were an item with the Tennessee Department of Transportation that was just resolved this week. The first item, which I laid the additional information on your desk before the council meeting, the first item is a contract for construction of the State Industrial Access Project on Joby Jackson Parkway. The council has previously approved a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the construction of public improvements which will serve the Amazon Fulfillment Center and enjoining industrial facilities on Joby Jackson Parkway. The improvements include the construction of two access roads, including their signalization as well as two right turn lanes. We've included a site map for your review. This project is being proposed to accommodate the additional traffic on Joby Jackson Parkway, which will be generated by the estimated 1,100 employees will be employed at the Amazon Fulfillment Center. Currently, the site construction is nearing completion and more than 1 million square foot facility is under roof. The building contractor is on schedule to turn over the facility to amazon.com by the 1st of October of this year. Bids were opened on July 3 of 2012 at 2:00 PM at City Hall. We received a total of three bids and two were open. The third bid was not opened due to the fact that it did not have the required information on the envelope. The low bid, the amount of $801,944.50, was submitted by Hoover Incorporated of Laverne, Tennessee. The SIA grant is in the amount of $1,266,503. A copy of the bid tabs were also attached. The bids were submitted to TDOT's Office of Local Programs for Review and staff has received their concurrence with awarding the contract to Hoover Incorporated. As mentioned previously, the total low bid from Hoover was $801,944.50. Based on the estimated quantities, the TDOT SIA grant will fund approximately $702,696.50. The remaining $99,248 will be funded by the developer of the project. Mentioned that the following item, the agenda, is a surety agreement from the developer for their portion of the funding. Staff and our consultant, SEC Incorporated, has reviewed the qualifications of Hoover and their subcontractors and are satisfied they are capable of completing this project within the specified contract time. Hoover Incorporated has been the city's annual paving contractor for several years and has recently successfully completed the Fortress Boulevard widening project. SEC has provided a letter of recommendation which is attached, and we recommend award of the SIA contract subject to the following. Approval and execution of the financial guarantee by both the city and the developer, and review and approval of the SIA construction contract by the city attorney. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Griffith?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. You have a motion and a second for approval. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Second item is a proposed agreement with U.S. Real Estate LP for the SIA improvements on Joby Jackson Parkway. For the item that you just considered, this agreement binds U.S. Real Estate Limited Partnership to reimburse the city for all costs that are not reimbursed by TDOT through the SIA grant. Further states that the parent company, U.S. AA Real Estate Company, is a guarantor. If U.S. Real Estate fails to make payment as specified in their agreement, U.S. AA is obligated to do so. I've also attached a copy of that agreement for your review. The proposed improvements, including the construction of the two signalized access roads and right turn lanes on Joby Jackson Parkway, will be fully funded by either the TDOT SIA grant or U.S. Real Estate Limited Partnership. Staff believes this agreement, which has been reviewed by the city attorney, will provide the necessary surety for the project and recommends approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions regarding this agreement to provide the surety for the project? If not, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. You have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. I fail to make recommendations for new and reappointments to our senior center commissioner, and I'd like to do that at this time. I recommend appointing Nancy Bryson Vaughn to a three-year term to fill the vacancy of Joyce Ely. Reappoint Philip Lance to serve his first three-year term. He was originally appointed to replace Father Caloracken, who resigned. Reappoint Stacy Newby to serve her first full three-year term. She was originally appointed replacing Stan Vaught, who resigned. Reappoint Bruce Duncan to serve his fifth three-year term. Reappoint Ada Fraser to serve her third three-year term. And reappoint Annie Usleton to serve her second three-year term. I make this recommendation to you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Other business?
Mayor, one quick thing.
Mr. McFarland?
Just wanted to make, I know when we want to give people atta boys and wanted to publicly say to Ms. Michado, she has done a fantastic job with transitioning into the iPads and getting everything moving along. So, wanted just to say in front of all 109,000 residents of Murfreesboro, that you've done a phenomenal job on moving us into the new technology world.
Yes, she has.
Great job.
That qualifies as an atta girl. We all are aware of how well our city staff does in many instances, and we hear about it when they don't, and it's certainly a pleasure to acknowledge and recognize everything you've done. Ms. Georgia, thank you. Anything else to come before the council?
Just want to remind everybody to be sure and go to Uncle Dave Making Days this weekend. We're celebrating our 200th birthday in Murfreesboro and it's our music month, and there's no better way to celebrate it than Uncle Dave Making Days.
Excellent. Ditto. You're adjourned.